The purpose of this is obviously to discuss the water and sewer rates. And I want to kind of put it in some context for those who...
Good job.
You may know this information, but I think it's kind of...
We're going to have to wait for Bob to come in, so...
Kind of the reason why we're here. Back in 2007, I guess it started. The Department of National Resources and EPA had determined that the city was in violation of the Clean Water Act based on the sewer discharges that were occurring. The state and EPA establishes discharge standards regarding pollutants. And it's not a zero standard, but you're allowed up to certain levels of various contaminants. And the city was like way over.
Probably on suspended solids.
Well, that's one of them. But, and so they cited the city for violations. And it was, I mean, it's no slap on the wrist. I mean, it's a serious matter for which prison sentence could have been meted out if it had gotten to that.
It'd be Greenville, Illinois.
Yeah. So the city wisely, in my opinion, negotiated with EPA and DNR. And they reached a settlement outside of court. And the city agreed to an order of consent, also called a consent decree. And they said, okay, we're not admitting criminal liability here, but we understand the problem and we're going to take steps to solve it. Now, the steps have to be approved by EPA. So they hired Horner and Schifrin, an engineering company, to help them together a plan of action. The city got a couple of extensions on that. I don't exactly know the circumstances. Steve might remember it because he was working for the city at the time. And finally, in December of 2009, the EPA signed off on the plan of action for the city. And it was a five-year plan. And the city was supposed to come into compliance, achieve certain benchmarks over that five-year period. It had to do with physical improvements of the plant. It had to do with operations and reporting. There were lots of things that the city had to do. And along the way, the city had to submit quarterly reports to DNR and EPA as to the progress that was being made. One of the elements of that was adequately funding the water and sewer operations. And so the city made rate adjustments that allowed the city to have the resources to do the improvements that were mandated. Suzie and I were just having a conversation. Not every city operates their sewer water systems off of, solely off of revenues. Many cities subsidize their operations. So people, you know, sometimes want to do rate comparisons. Well, I know a city where the rate is whatever. Well, that city could be using other revenue funds to operate their system. You know, some cities don't even meter water consumption. So it's kind of hard to do comparables, but I did that five years ago. And we were pretty much, in terms of rates, kind of in the middle. I haven't done it since then. So in 2009, the city hired Alliance to first take over the water operations. And apparently, they were sufficiently pleased with Alliance's performance on the water that they entered into a contract in 2010 for them to take over the sewer and to accept the city's responsibilities for continuing to make the improvements on the five-year plan and making the reports to DNR along the way and EPA. In 2015, that's five years later, Steve was part of that process, the city asked EPA to consider the work that has been done, the progress that has been made, and to terminate the order, which they did. Today, DNR brings people here to show them how a water and sewer operation should be done. So we certainly changed our reputation in the regulatory world. But we've got to keep doing it. I mean, we can't, we need to continue to make that kind of progress or maintain our current level of operations, or the history will repeat itself. So in 2014, we were talking about this among this board. Only one of the board members that was on that board is here tonight. And they said, you know, the statute says that the city should review its rates every year. And there's no reason why we can't take a longer view of that. And instead of having a rate hearing discussion every year, let's look at it over a five-year period. So Alliance put together a five-year projection of plans with various rate changes to reflect the work that was being done in a given year. So the first year was pretty high. The next year, it dropped down to under 2%. The next year, went back up to 2%. So it's always been under 3%, somewhere between 1.5% and 3%, but 2% was kind of the average over that time. I, Steve, presented our sewer and water budget at our budget hearing. And without great discussion, informed us that it contained a 2% increase. And I'm not blaming him for that.
I don't remember that, so...
Okay, well, regardless. The... We can't increase the budget without an ordinance. And we can't increase the rate without an ordinance. And so, and the ordinance can be done without a public hearing. But when we did it five years ago, we chose to have a public hearing. And so Pam came to me and said, well, should we do a public hearing this time? And I said, yes, we should. I accept responsibility for putting the cart before the horse. I mean, we should have had the discussion before the budget. It wouldn't have made that much difference because the ordinance has to come after the budget. You can't pass an ordinance to implement a budget you haven't adopted yet. But some adjustment would have had to been made if you not factored an increase in and you decided to do an increase. We'd have to do a budget adjustment. If you factor in an increase and don't do it, we have to do a budget adjustment. And something would have to be done after the budget was adopted to reconcile the action of the board relative to it. So, you know, and it's been expressed to me by Mike and Suzie and I think everybody thinks that we solicit public input, so we scheduled this public hearing. Again, I apologize, without consulting with you. So you kind of got hit blindsided with a public hearing for rates. And the... So tonight, I asked Steve and Ron to come in and go over in detail kind of the why they made the recommendation for this. You have no obligation to do anything. You don't have to change rates. You can adopt a rate for one year, and we can work on it later if you want to do that. Or you can adopt the five-year rate. The reason we did it the last time, again, was so that the, you know, you consider all the factors and you think about it in terms of a multi-year plan. And once you've adopted the plan, you're adopting of next year's budget would be the second step in implementing the plan this year. Well, I'm not saying that, but you understand what I'm saying. If you, when whoever's running the sewer system comes in and says, here's the budget for next year, it will include the adjustment that was part of the plan. You're approving the plan, you're not approving the increase. You have to do that annually, and you can always choose not to do it. So the fact that you adopt a five-year plan doesn't commit you to some, to future rate adjustments. But it does provide the guidance for making that decision. And it's done more routinely than this is being done. Because this, we're going to try and, you know, go through this work session and talk about it. So anyway, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve and Ron to talk about why 2%.
Can I start off?
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ron Smith. For those that I haven't, I've been coming the last six months or so. I am, I work for Alliance, corporate side. I'm a division manager. I work with Steve and we, I support him and then we help each other and I help him with the budget. And so I'm familiar with what we've done here. First of all, I wanted to congratulate the council and the city for the story, the narrative that Martin, I didn't know he was going to give the history, but looking at the finances and the reserves that the city has built up over the years with their incremental rate increases, outstanding actually, just like EPA would want. They call that full cost pricing. So what that means is, and this is how the approach that we take with our budget, full cost pricing is those funds necessary to sustain the water and sewer system. And by that, we mean not only the day-to-day O and M and those unexpected expenses that come up like main breaks and sanitary sewer overflows, et cetera, debt service, and then, of course, capital improvements. And then the last piece is setting money aside for that reserve. Every municipality, every public entity should have reserve for spring day for continuing on the capital improvements. So that's what this budget that Steve and I put together is a 2% increase for water rates and sewer. And just as a frame of reference, I was looking at the rates, the current rate schedule. Did some calculation. Average customer here, average household uses about $5,000 gallon of water a month. And I find this to be really good for a community this size. That's less than a penny a gallon. Their water bill comes out for about $44. That's less than a penny a gallon. You think about that, the city should be happy. They should be really pleased that they're able to provide water that meets every state structural standard at that price. So the 2%, that is, that was picked as a level that would provide full cost pricing. And then yet still has something left over to put into the reserves. So that's why Steve chose the 2%. He's got roughly $470,000 of capital improvements in the budget. And then, of course, all the day-to-day. And he's taken it into account. Please correct me or if I say something wrong, you'll whack. But he's got increases. He's talked to some of the major vendors for the O and M side, Susan's electric, Mississippi line, a 3% increase coming from the electric company, 5% increase in line. Of course, the line is a salt machine. There's a lot of that. Pipe materials, plants, valves, et cetera, 2%. Pump and motor suppliers said that their work is going to be 3% higher. So you're getting the, so he's built that into the budget. And along with that, there's the Alliance portion. We've asked for 1.8%. And that's primarily salaries and benefits for our people. Obviously, the majority of our services, which is kind of what we do, so that's why we're asking for 1.8%. And then, of course, $348,000 for capital improvements, which includes...
The capital improvement list you find on the water section is going to be infrastructure improvement. As you did, right now, there's $205,000 in there for water main replacement on Biltmore. There's also $11,500 for valves in the line sludge building at the water plant. There's water tower in the room there. Water tank improvement, that's through utility services to make clean this effect, keep our power system fine. The $22,000 there is for small equipment and tools. That went for the trade-in of our mini excavator for a larger unit. Some of the born drilling areas make us cost to us up to that. Well improvements, DNR recommends you clean two wells a year, or one well every year. We have four wells. So instead of doing one well a year, $70,000, what does that do with our well provider? Two wells, they save on mobilization and tempo deliveries. We can clean two wells cheaper than we clean one. So that's what I want to bring up. On the sewer side, you're going to see $105,000 for sewer main replacement. Of course, you don't want to build work. $5,000 for small equipment, that's for jetty nodules, cleaning sewer mains. And $15,000 for sewer improvement. It's going to be manholes that come across, others beyond repair, things to be replaced. All of that comes up to, what was it, four...
$470,000.
$470,000. That's been budgeted for. It doesn't have to be borrowed. There's no interest involved. They are direct benefits to the customer.
So that covers the 2020 year.
Yes.
What is the basis for going beyond that?
Right, so Steve is working on a five-year capital improvement plan. And he is, my guidance to him is to be fairly aggressive in selecting the projects that need to be done. Given the age of some of the system and some of the condition of some of the pipes, especially on the north side of the city, we want, I'm looking at 325 to 375 a year at least. And what I'm looking at, and I know this is an accounting situation, but I looked at the 2018 audit that the city has and looked at the depreciation of the capital assets for the water and sewer. And so this isn't accounting. This doesn't necessarily reflect what's actually happening. But the system value, book value depreciated 3.2%. And so that's a guide, a good guide. The EPA says that's a good guide at what you should consider for looking at and then building your capital program around. So you don't really want a system that keeps depreciation. You want to stay ahead of the game, right? So that's the reason for building the reserve and then going forward a similar capital program for the next five years. Steve's looking at the most, what he considers the most critical projects, both on the water and sewer side.
Those projects would include areas on the north end of town, which would be, of course, Biltmore, which I've already mentioned, Biltmore, Le Hay, Roberts, the north end of 4th Street, 4th Street itself, and continuing in that direction across to Main. The sewer system has an astronomical amount of INI up in that area. That's infiltration of rainwater, basically, whether it be through gutters, whether it's broken mains, manhole lids, manholes themselves. That area takes a very small amount of rain to interrupt service or disrupt the system. So the north end of town is the area that needs the most attention.
And I want to reiterate what Martin had said, and I'm a big proponent of, too, reevaluating every year based on the situation on the ground. He's putting together a plan that's going to be there, ready to execute. But the council, every year, will look at reserves, the financial situation of the city, the cost to the customer, and have to make that decision every year, whether or not they want to raise rates or whether they want to do those projects. So our job, we're just providing input and recommendations. And of course, the city council decides on what to do, you know.
Ron, can we pack up in just a minute and stuff? This 2% increase, you know, that you're talking about, how much revenue is that going to generate? And how much will that cost that average 5,000-gallon household?
That will cost the average customer about $1.50 a month.
On both water and sewer?
Yeah, total. And then it will be about $20,000 on the water. It'll be less than that on the sewer. That's over a year's time.
You mentioned average is $44. How much of that is water and how much is sewer?
That was all water.
Yep.
Yeah, the sewer is, I think, 35 or there.
32 or 34, yeah.
Because I lived in the county.
Yes.
I had no sewer, but my water bill's half what I pay in town, and I'm by myself.
Your water bill is half of...
What it was when I lived in the county.
Oh, yeah.
Half.
Public water for the county that serves, they have no treatment plant. They only have wells. There's no treatment. Okay. Now, every community is different. You'll find larger communities, their bills are generally smaller than the smaller citizens or smaller communities. And that's because they have more citizens to pay for the fixed costs. You know, there's a certain fixed cost, regardless of whether you sell a drop or not, that has to be paid. The more customers you have, the smaller that share of fixed cost is. So that's why St. Louis County or even St. Charles, we were looking at, their average water bill is only 35, while they've got 50,000 households. So that helps to defray some of the costs. That's why, I know I'm, I'm really pleased with the rates at St. Jen for a community of 2,200 connections. That's not a large, a real large system, yet the pricing is still a bargain, in my opinion, you know.
Martin, from 2000 to 10 to 14, what were the rates? Was there any increases in those years?
Yes, each year, we implemented the plan. It was approved in 2014, 2010 to 14?
Right.
And there were no increases.
This five-year plan that we're talking about as far as increases and stuff...
Well, I don't know what that says. Starting in '11, there were no increases. No increase up to 2014.
Right.
This five-year plan that we're talking about, setting up for the sewer rates and stuff, that doesn't coincide with our contract to Alliance, does it?
It's unrelated.
And our contract with Alliance increases every year also, correct?
To my knowledge, yes.
Yeah, and they're capped at 3% a year. So that's the most they can ask. They've never gone that high. Actually, if you had a 2%, I think it's always been under 3%.
We were 1.8 this year, yeah.
Are there some need to do the feeder line?
Yes, that is, that's going to be part of the waterline project. We'll get cost on that. That'll be 771 feet of water main replacement.
Did you hear from Baker today?
I did. Did I hear from him?
Did you talk to him?
Briefly.
About the feeder line?
No.
Okay, and you talked about what's not going to be done on the feeder line?
Okay, yes.
Had we not had our program in place that we've been doing the last, what, four or five years, Martin?
Since 2014.
Yeah, five years. Safe to say, we would not have been able to put new water lines in on 9th Street, on St. Mary's Road, on Main Street, and many other areas that we've done, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, you would have, you would have pretty much no system improvements.
In that five years, how many feet or miles of new water line would you say we've...
Water lines alone, four miles.
And how many more, how many miles of water line are in the city?
30.
30?
That includes portions of all of Valley Springs, M Roads, the area that feeds Progress Parkway. That's all newer PVC materials already.
Is there an advantage to doing a five-year plan versus a one-year plan?
Anytime you can plan five years out and prepare for it, yes, there's an advantage.
Well, that's good if you know what your figures are going to be in five years.
But it's just a plan.
It's a plan.
I realize that.
So an additional benefit, and I don't know, when it comes to borrowing money, let's say, or selling bonds, the first thing they ask is, what's your plan for capital improvements? And what's your rate schedule going to look like? So that looks really good. If you've got that in place, and you don't have to execute, but it's there in place, the Moody's, the Standard &amp; Poor's, the underwriters, they all look very favorable and give the city a higher bond rating, yeah.
The horse is in good shape, right?
What did we say about credit rating?
Yeah.
Last time we went to the credit market, they were critical not of the water and sewer. We was, you know, about balance. I think if they redid it today, they would be pleased. Because the trend has been up. Up until that point, the trend had been down. And that's what they were commenting about, what you're using, getting it. So I think, we haven't walked out of the market since then, so I can't tell you what their opinion would be, but I think it was favorable. We're still, we still have a high rate, and they didn't take our bond rating on this one. But I don't see, in the next five years, if we're not, the city is going to borrow money, or we're not going to.
No, the reserves that the city's built up is quite impressive. I think you can accomplish a lot without drawing those down significantly, as long as your rate structure, you know, edges up over time. Not drastically, but just you have to keep replenishing the reserves as you do.
Where do we feel is a comfortable number with reserves? Like, are we over that? Or, you know, like, because I know in water, we're sitting at 1.2-ish, and then sewer, I think, is a million percent.
So it's a comfort level that a lot of our client, every client is different. There's a, what do they call it, a yardstick or a measuring device that folks, the people that sell bonds would say six months of operating cash is a really good thing to have. That they were favored. I think St. Jen's got about 10, 11 right now. So what that means, but should everybody decide to quit paying their water bill in St. Jen?
Their concern is whether or not you pay your debt service. They don't think about what would happen if, you know, if the water tower fell. So they're not calculating that. They're calculating your ability to cover the note that we signed off.
Yeah, well, that's what the operating, the cash includes, the debt service, and then the fixed cost that you have to pay, just to understand.
The other thought is, setting your reserves is, you have sufficient money to pay if the most expensive thing you operate fails. Sometimes insurance covers it, but you can't wait. You've got to, you've got to stay in operation. So that's, that's the other approach to thinking about it, is there, what's your...
I'm still trying to get my mind wrapped around this 2% and what we're funding with that 2%. We're funding more than just improvements. We're also funding the contract increase with Alliance.
Yes, that's part of the operating spend, yes.
And what is that contract amount increase?
It's $79,000 this year per month.
Yeah, so it's 1.8% over what it was like, I don't, how much, what's the increment?
$949,428 for the following year.
And that's a how much of an increase?
1.8% from this year.
And how many dollars is that?
$949,000.
That's total.
Oh, the dollar. Oh, the dollar increase.
You were talking about the incremental.
Oh, I don't know.
What's the incremental increase?
1.8.
1.8, so.
1.8% of 8,000, so what is it?
About 14, 40, about 14,400 dollars some month.
So, this 20,000, would you say on the water side and less on the sewer side, so $35,000 increase?
Extra revenues.
In revenues, yeah.
And I meant like Jimmy, I don't remember that in the budget, that 2% increase, so, but I might have missed it.
So, if the increases were, if we decided not to pass them, what would that mean for you?
That would, of course, take the capital. It would either eliminate projects, eliminate the city moving forward, which would include the depreciation outweighing the improvements, and basically the city water and sewer system go backwards.
So, what costs is more in the long run, in your opinion?
Or we take it out of reserves.
When you spin down your reserves, it's going backwards.
Well, we've got to continue to work on infrastructure. My goodness, that's, we can't afford not to do that. I mean...
Well, I don't want my questions construed as negative against you, because it's not. You have to ask to understand what your program, I don't make decisions without information.
If, for my math, if we, for this year, for 2020, if we decided not to pass it for just 2020, it'd be about a $90,000 hit in the reserves, I think. Does that sound right, relative? I have basically 42,000 on water deficit, 12,000 on sewer deficit, and then plus the 35K that we'd lose in revenue. Comes out to be about 90,000. It's the kind of hit that our reserves would take.
That seems reasonable. And of course, depending on revenues generated, that's our projection, if it was a dry year, maybe you'd get more water, you never know.
And that's not adjusting any budget, that's if the budget stays the same, that's just what we would take out of the reserves.
Yeah.
For 2020.
Mm-hmm.
And then you said, after 2020, we expect the infrastructure improvements to go down? You said more closely to 325 to 375?
That's what I would, that's what I, the guidance I'd give him to Steve, just to continue to reinvest, but try to be mindful of the end user as well, and then drawing down our reserves too far, so. But as time goes, there may be something that becomes urgent that might be more, you know, this is a plan, right? He's looking, trying to look five years out.
You know, it's just with all of the, you know, we've seen a sales tax increase, we've seen a proposition increase, we'll get it up there.
Yeah, I mean, the water department, the city has bills too, I mean, here, Citizens 3%, Mississippi Line 5%.
Right.
Did you, those were calculated into the budget as well, right? You calculated those increases.
Yeah.
So, I guess a main question would be, do we want to tap the reserves or not? Do we feel comfortable or not?
You know, with the government involved and their departments as much as it is, it's a catch-22. Compliance is everything. You know, the dollar fifty a month is not a scary number, and that's why it was really, you know, it relate down to the everyday person, that's why, you know...
The limit is increase every year for the past five years, and I've never heard a word from anybody.
Mm-hmm. All right. I had a lot of words when it was published in the paper, and the alderman didn't know about it, I'll just say that.
Right, now it's it.
Okay. And a lot of people are on fixed incomes that, I mean, that's the average about going to have, some of them, you know, are a lot more than that, but...
Well, one way to look at it, if we don't continue with what we're doing, and something happens, we're looking at a major tag, our rate increase to cover something then, or, you know, possibly bond issues or stuff that's going to hit us harder than, you know, trying to keep ahead of the game.
Ron, I'm going to ask you a question, as you do business with a lot of other municipalities and stuff, I mean, are we in line, are we, you know, are our rates comparable, I mean, I know you...
It's, so every community is different, depending on their needs, so your rates are, I'll just say, they're a little less than Franklin County Number Three Water District in the Washington area, but they're very much in line with, you know, the size. I'd actually say they're probably on the middle, mid-low, yeah.
Again, it's hard to get an actual comparison, because every city kind of manages it differently, but that's the same conclusion we gave you five years ago, kind of...
Low, mid, yeah.
Now, I did review some other cities, about 20 of them, and some review their rate structure every five years, some have, some replenish it at 4% annually on water, 3.5% sewer, that's one, some revisit it every year, some of them have five-year plans, I mean, it's just all over as well.
But once again, the accounting doesn't really necessarily translate, but the average life of water and wastewater systems, equipment, between 50 and 75 years, if you save 50, that depreciates 2% a year, kind of falls in line with the 2% that the city's been, you know, just to stay on top of, just to keep rebuilding your system so it doesn't further depreciate. That's just another metric to look at, you know. All these things, there's no really right answer.
So, taking our overall, both our systems into being, I mean, how up to date are they? Are they good shape for how many years to come, are they...
These lines that I continue to refer back to, the transit lines, those were put in in the mid-50s.
But I mean, our main sewer plant, you know, as I referenced to, I mean, are we good there for...
I mean, there's nothing wrong with the sewer plant. You know, we continue to update the motors with high-energy efficiency motors, we get better pumps, there's nothing wrong with the wastewater plant.
Same with our water treatment?
Water plant has a tank in there that's going to need some attention here in the next few years, but, and paint, but that's normal. Other than routine stuff, I mean, it's mechanically sound as well.
So, overall, we have two good systems?
We do.
But as, like the air, if things wear out, kind of...
Yeah, the aeration rover at the wastewater plant, two years ago, broken half, that was $140,000 expense. Had we not had reserves, we'd be in sad shape. You know, the UV system, you know, the jetter trailer, the sewer emergency fund balance has taken about a quarter million dollar hit in the past few years, that's why it's substantially lower than the water.
So, when is our contract up with Alliance, or how do we renew that or rebid it, or...
It's up to 21.
Yeah.
And we put out a request for qualifications, so we want to do, and solicit qualification statements from Alliance and anybody else who's in the business. Then you review them and make your selection based on what you think will be the best service for the price you want to pay.
It seemed like there should be some kind of timeframe together with our plan and their contracts, so that it flows for that whole entire five years or something, I guess. Irrelevant?
No, I don't think it's irrelevant, and so, I like that concept, and in order to ensure that the plan is executed, and then so we can do something with the pricing possibly to make it even better for the city.
Because, I mean, you're telling us where we need to be rate-wise and stuff here, it just seems like the two should come together, I think.
Perhaps you consider a two-year plan, get you to 21, I forget the month, the April, September, that lineup with the fiscal year.
Right. I don't know.
I mean, it's not a bad idea, I don't, I think it's a very good idea, but...
Well, we're not bound... Two years better than five, to me.
We're not bound to any plan, it can be revisited every year if we wanted to, but...
Yeah, right.
I like the idea of having something, a long-term plan in place, whether or not it's with them or whether or not it's with us here, that plan can change at any time, but for right now, we need to make our decisions, I think, on a long-term basis, which can change from year to year, as this board changes, or as their management contract changes. But I would like to see a, I'd like the plan for the future and not take the can down the road like we've always done.
But you just heard the experts say they would rather do it that way, coincide the two programs together.
Well, it helps us ensure that what we're recommending gets done, we hate to leave something halfway through.
Right.
Agree with that.
Yeah. I like the idea of them being tied together, I, you know, it gives them a definitive time, we're asking them to put a plan into place for our systems and stuff, I just, you know...
Well, and after these two years, then it could be a longer plan, if it's renewed or whoever it's with, because we don't know if someone else comes in, for instance, just hypothetically, plan can be different, so, but if we do renew them, then that renewal have a five-year plan with it or something along those lines.
Well, that plan would be there. I mean, for even the new people coming in. I mean, that'd be our property, right?
Oh, yes, everything we do, that you pay us for, is your property, yeah.
So, it'd be a good idea, possibly, just to add those there, past the two years.
I'm concerned in my desire for the three years, to make sure that what's being imposed isn't viewed as arbitrary. Figure out the error and say, here, do that, based on some analysis of the needs of both our operating expenses and age of the system and anticipation of what might happen over whatever period of time, limits policies decisions with the board prerogative.
Well, I know it's been...
Go plan, a two-year plan or a five-year plan?
We're going to put together a five-year plan, because I think it's important for the city, and as far as Alliance goes, we do want to stay here, and I'll, I'm going to go to work putting together a proposal to stay here and see if it's reasonable, if not, the plan is still for the city to execute with whomever.
Well, I know it's been peace of mind ever since this happened, you know, that, when we went...
When you were here, it wasn't peaceful.
Yeah, it was, it was carrying time.
We were avoiding it.
You remember that, too? Yeah. We had, it was a concern, a big concern.
Look how much more involvement the government is on all this monitoring and everything you have to keep up with and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's got, I mean, I've operated utility systems, and it's always this huge contingent liability, the old one. It gets harder and harder to comply, because they keep...
The goalpost, they're even, the DNR is even considering passing a regulation that mandates how much public entities have to invest back into their system, yeah. They're all kicking that around right now, but...
No number?
The 2% is, yeah, because of the, they're looking at the accounting, 50-year life, 50 years you got the zero, which you put back in, so, hasn't passed or anything, there's a lot of, a lot of communities can't afford it.
To date, DNR doesn't regulate, they regulate results and outputs, not processes.
Right, but EPA has, you know, the link with DNR, DNR, they kind of delegate to DNR and...
Well, I understand, DNR has to implement EPA's regulations, but EPA doesn't dictate, doesn't get involved in the financing and operations.
Not, no, but they're...
They're really new.
Yeah, the legislatures are talking about it, so...
Stephen, the whole plant, what's the, what's the highest cost item? Like, if something broke today, you probably have answered this before, I apologize, what, off the top of your head, what's the highest cost item that we have, and how much does that cost?
That'd be the claricon. I'd say the price of a new claricon would probably, probably just under a million would be my guess.
Is that that big?
Big fall. And again, I invite all of you to come by anytime.
How likely would that, would it be that that might fail?
Hasn't fallen over yet. Well, once you see it, you'll understand.
Yeah, it's fair enough, it's amazing.
It's a sight, you wouldn't believe what's on Market Street.
So, how long have we had Alliance?
Since 2009.
Since 2009.
And the increase that we've asked for, has it been relatively consistent?
As far as...
The amount of...
As far as our...
Yes.
The last two years have been slightly less than in the past, I think, last year it was about 2 and 1.8, but it's been as high as, like Martin says, 2.5 to 3.4, you know.
So, say in 2021, we put it out for bid and we bring a new Alliance in, a new company and stuff, and they come back and say they need a 5% increase every year.
Then you don't want to sign the contract?
Yeah, you're staying with Alliance.
I mean, that would be part of what you look at when they're making their competing proposals.
Are there a lot of companies out there that...
Not a lot, but several, yeah.
How big is Alliance, I mean?
We've got roughly 400 employees, but we have over 40 divisions, so this is a division, 40 different clients. We're actually mostly in Missouri, but we've got a division in Iowa, and we're really Tennessee and Kentucky are really focused, they're really, their system is in total disrepair. We never get a job where everything's running smoothly and they're generating cash, we're the fixing guys, we come to fix things, yeah.
Fix it up.
Yeah. Yeah, so what do we do now?
Any more questions?
No, that's the only topic for discussion.
Feel free to fire him his way, and he'll fire the ones to me that he wants me on him.
Bring it on. 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 Let's have to do that first thing.
Based on approval of the budget, I'll issue an RFQ for, a request for qualifications for engineering, and we will go from there.
Didn't you say the other day that it'd be sometime in January where that work will be done?
But depending on engineering on it.
So, what do we stand on paving, seater?
They'll begin, they've got notice to proceed, and they have a number of days in the contract, they'll begin as soon as they finish the seater line.
But I mean, we're just going to do the cherry?
Yeah.
Walnut.
Walnut?
Walnut. 771 feet.
That's the best way to go, we'll pick it back up though, Jimmy.
Yeah, but we'll go, we'll go from that end to walnut.
Yeah, we're going to finish that, it's just, it's no sense, we don't want to tear it.
But it had to be in next year's.
Yeah, it'd be in next year's, but that'd be something, I'm sure, the board, that should be a help right there.
Okay.
Fix that.
All righty.
Thank you, man. Thank you, man.
Thank you very much.
Ten minutes for the meeting, start the...
Eric, what happened to the chair?
I put the new chair up there.
Is that it?
No, I've carried a chair over there today. The one that's in there?
This one?
I didn't, was that other chair supposed to go there?